Much for waiting. We will bring the meeting back to order and we will receive a report on the City Council questions relative to the General Plan Advisory Committee, G-PAC, rules and responsibilities, the general plan update process approach. We have pulled the approval of the bylaws, that's no longer part of the update, and review a draft request for proposal to hire a consultant. And Paul Carmoian.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Members of the City Council. So, tonight's meeting just generally is to talk about the update process as well as the G-PAC responsibilities. Please note, you do have a desk item from STACK that is questioning the selection of the G-PAC committee and appears one individual in particular. Also, Mr. Mayor, you did mention that the bylaws portion has been removed and that was through the advice of the city attorney who indicated that even a discussion of the bylaws would subject it to Brown Act rules, so it's best just to remove it because that seemed to be the council's wish to not subject any G-PAC members to Brown Act.
So I did not just subject them, right?
No, you're good. You're good. Okay. So, before we get started, let's just kind of go back to the fact of, you know, why we're here. We're here because the council in their council priority setting session identified the need to update the general plan. And we began that process, that discussion, basically last fiscal year. And then, in June, we held a study session on what a comprehensive general plan update process would be. And we use that term comprehensive, I'm going to talk about it, I talked about in this staff report, I mean, a little bit. But that, this was kind of the starting of actually kind of getting into what is the general plan update process all about and how can we do it? There's different ways to do it. And we tried to lay out this process. And it was a great meeting because it stimulated a lot of conversation of the council and a lot of comments that I tried to capture here as well in one of the attachments, I believe attachment six, well, one of the attachments, maybe attachment two, yeah, attachment two. So let me get started with the staff report. So, at the last meeting, the July 7th meeting, the council had, this was an agendized item, it was at the very end of the meeting, there was a discussion of, you know, how are we going to go about the whole general plan advisory committee process and the update process? And there was certain individuals drawing from their recollection and it just kind of stimulated this conversation and the idea was, well, wait a minute, let's just, let's try to respond to all your questions and bring it back to this meeting and that's why we're here today. But it was clear that there seemed to be a need to establish a purpose statement, a purpose statement prior to any visioning. And then also, the update duration, there seemed to be recollection that we were going to complete it within a certain amount of time. I think in our G-PAC applications, we said it could take up to two and a half years. So there was conversation on duration. There was conversation on what's the G-PAC representation, the roles, responsibilities, and how are we going to utilize the G-PAC? As well as staff's roles and responsibilities, where does staff play a part? And more importantly, where does the public participation play a part? As well as consultant requests for proposal. I didn't anticipate the RFP coming to you, but I know it's really urgent we get this going, so I threw that in there as a starting point and I'll talk about that as well. So the purpose statement. So, council discussed this need to prepare a purpose statement as to what the envisioned Campbell process will attempt to achieve. For the public's benefit, envisioned Campbell is the language or term that we have established to identify the general plan update. Now, because the council was the body who initiated, it's the individual council that says the general plan no longer represents the vision of the community, you were the body to initiate this, so what staff is suggesting is that maybe the purpose statement should be created by the city council to focus the G-PAC. In the update duration, the comprehensive update was never meant to mean this is a complete rewrite. Usually when something is so focused, it's kind of a focused review, like we updated our transportation element to incorporate complete streets. That wouldn't be a comprehensive update, it's just more of a focused review. So, comprehensive update does mean that the entire document will be under consideration. It's not a focused review and that comment has been made time and time again by the council that there's various elements that we need to look at. And I did my best to capture some of the comments of that meeting and then I drew reference to what elements those comments pertain to. And as you can see, it covers the full gamut. So, the new, and also there were new elements that would likely be added as well, so those would be in addition to what we currently have. One council member believed there was consensus that the update will take less than two and a half years. One council member believed the duration was out of the council's control. One council member believed it would take longer, that's just the way government works. And then there is, just to make it very clear, there is no goal to prolong the process. Of course, we should get it done as quickly as possible. So, this is a discussion point for the council to begin a dialogue. G-PAC representation, advisory committee, so G-PAC is the General Plan Advisory Committee. And the advisory committee was intended to represent a wide sample of individuals throughout the city. There was discussion of it being a broad demographic of individuals. So, young, old, middle-aged, you know, what have you, just full gamut of individuals throughout the community. Diversity of opinions desired, so we had questions in the application, so, you know, how did people view the community and what were some of the issues that they had identified as important? So, their opinions were valuable in the application process. A manageable size of the G-PAC. Too large can be out of control, too small may not represent the broad demographic of the community. There was also council desire to not have influence of the G-PAC members from elected or appointed officials. I believe that even included staff, that staff was not going to even be on this. And that the city manager would appoint the G-PAC. The G-PAC roles and responsibilities. Identify, what was, what the council made very clear is they want the G-PAC to understand what's working well, what's not working well, and what needs to be included. And educating the G-PAC on that was very clear, so we had all, we had sent out following that meeting, an email to all the G-PAC members indicating, this is where you're able to access all of the city's documents, the general plan, all the implementation plans such as area plans. And there's some area plans that are actually part of the general plan and there's area plans that are intended to implement the general plan as well as zoning ordinance as So, the G-PAC role and responsibilities would be also to draft new and revised goals, policies, and implementation measures coordinated by the consultant. It is going to be expected that there's consistent participation, that's the way we would build continuity within the process and consistency. And that bylaws would be needed. So, we were under the impression that the council could approve the bylaws. I went ahead and prepared them, and then we were informed by our legal counsel that is not permitted. But if you do, then they're subject to the Brown Act and open meeting laws and all that. So, we will probably use the draft bylaws as the starting point to let the G-PAC themselves actually prepare their own bylaws, once again, working with the consultant. So the G-PAC utilization, as I pointed out, the G-PAC needs to become familiar with the existing general plan and implementing documents. The consultant will facilitate all the G-PAC discussions. Meeting minutes will be prepared and then the consultant G-PAC will return to the council at the conclusion of each element for their delivery of what they prepared and then the city council's comment. Now, in the staff report, I've suggested that at that point, don't approve that portion of the element, just say, okay, it looks good for now and let's move on to the next because there may be other elements that may change what you just accepted. But there has to be some form of acceptance so they can move on to the next level. Staff roles and responsibilities. Staff has formed an internal committee made up of department heads and we're calling that the staff advisory committee. And we're more going to just kind of monitor the discussion regarding how policies may have staffing implications and as well as policy consistencies. There may be policies that we see adopted that may be kind of X-ing out another policy that they're creating, so we can kind of monitor the internal consistencies. And if we see that, we'll send a memo to the consultant in G-PAC and let them know, hey, we're seeing this and if you do this, then this could happen, we want you just to be aware of that. Memos will be forwarded to the consultant G-PAC. The community development department will manage the consultant contract and I intend to provide you monthly staff reports of the progress of the G-PAC. So, we'll have monthly meetings where I'll have a staff report explaining what the status of their progress is. And then that will also give the public the opportunity to participate in those discussions, those status report meetings. Once again, this is what staff is suggesting, if you don't like this approach, let us know and we can alter it. So the public participation, I kind of put into two categories, one's direct and one's indirect. Direct is they'll be able to attend every commission and council status report meetings. They'll be able to attend any study sessions if warranted, if study sessions are needed throughout the process. We're certainly going to have community outreach meetings, so they'll be able to attend those and comment. Attend meetings on the environmental document, as you know, there's different stages of that review and public participation, as well as attend all public hearings. The indirect would be monitoring the G-PAC work, so we're going to require the consultant to actually have someone preparing minutes of all the G-PAC discussions. Those minutes will be posted on the website. We've already created, right now, to the best that we can at this point, a general plan website and it's going to keep building, we're going to populate it with more information as it becomes available. Review the staff reports and memos that are posted online, so we're going to have those. Access Peak Democracy, the open town hall civic engagement platform, we're going to set that up. Our IT department is currently working on the application and that will provide a direct link to the website as well as some other things. I haven't yet talked with the IT manager, but he's making progress on that. As well as speak with your elected officials, that's always encouraged for the public. The request for proposal, so you have a draft RFP in here. The city council has made it clear that they want to review the applications, interview the consultants, as well as hire. So, the RFP has been created to capture council conversations, including specific questions to ask, so I did my best to review the minutes and try to capture all those. There was discussion of the use of a council subcommittee to evaluate and interview the entire, or the entire council, so I'm asking you to pick if you want it to be the subcommittee to do the interview and hire, or should it be the entire city council? That's a little vague. And then the staff advisory committee is also looking at the RFP right now. It's not complete at this point because I, especially for Todd's team, I want to be clear that in this general plan update, we pretty much want the consultant to analyze every street, every arterial, every collector, major intersections, just because the land use and the circulation, it's kind of cart horse, which one goes first? Do you look at the land use first or do you look at the circulation? And so those two, we really need to get those in sync. So, staff's recommendation this evening is provide a consensus on the purpose statement. Why are we conducting this update to the general plan? Provide comment and consensus on the update duration. Is there a certain time period we want to hold the consultant to? The use of the G-PAC and its roles and responsibilities. Provide comment and consensus with use of staff roles and responsibilities, as well as provide comment on the RFP. Now, the idea here is this is draft, I'm going to collect your comments, incorporate them, collect staff's comments, incorporate them, and then bring them back, bring the RFP back to you for a decision. So that's kind of the sequence. And that concludes staff's report.
All right. Thank you very much for the report. I think that kind of brings us really up to speed. Do we have any questions for staff in regards to the report? Okay. Seeing none, I will open up the public hearing and the first speaker is Susan Landry. So please state your name, address, and you have two minutes. And you did make a lot of notes on here too, so we'll be able to take those into account if you go over your two minutes.
Thank you, I wrote some notes on my form there.
If you don't finish your two minutes, yeah.
All right, let's start here. I am very happy to announce that I'm appointed to the G-PAC committee as an alternative, but doesn't tell me what I get to do. The bylaws state that it's not open to the public, it doesn't say what an alternate does other than fill in the spot if someone leaves. I think it's like jury duty though, I need to be a part of the process to know what's going on, so when we go to a vote and a full member leaves and I'm officially appointed to the committee, I know what I'm doing. So I just would like to have you clarify what I am doing as an alternate. I'm number one on the list. And since you took the bylaws out, I won't go through all of that, but basically as an ad hoc, not subject to Brown Act alternatives, members aren't invited. Okay, so I want to talk about your purpose statement and have some words for you to add to it. Well, why are you doing it? Things have changed, codes, laws, ways of thinking, and impacts on our city. Where are we now? We are a global community, we are environmentally aware, and we are looking towards sustainability. We are finding it difficult to maintain the small-town image of Campbell. We are sensitive to drought conditions and global warming and we are a lot smarter than we were in 2001. We are understanding the regional impacts. We are a healthier community, we are healthier community members, which make us more concerned about all of these impacts that are we going to have on each other. So I think these are some of the words I'd like to see in your purpose statement and there's one word I don't want to see anywhere and that's the word urban. We are not an urban city. I want you to come up with a new word for high density other than urban. But please, we are smarter, stronger, healthier, and we want that to be reflected in your purpose statement. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Ann Castleton. Please state your name, address, and you'll have two minutes. Thank you.
I'm Ann Castleton and I live at 2212 Central Park Drive. And I'm here representing the Campbell Village Neighborhood Association. And we have two concerns, one is the selection process. We don't feel, let's see, the community development director, see the applicants on June 30th and the attachments that were made for tonight, has come to our attention that an individual who was selected for the G-PAC and the Campbell city manager had informed that an individual he had nothing to do with the selection process, and this is in direct opposition what was brought up. And the representation, the June 2nd, 2015 city council study session staff report noted, in order to optimize community involvement, the council felt the selection process should target a wide sample of individuals who are geographically spaced throughout the entire community, so that no one neighborhood was represented or overly representative. And the list of individuals on there, it says that three representatives with a fourth being an alternate. So one neighborhood has 20% on the committee and the other neighborhoods, some neighborhoods have, like might have no representation at all. A significant majority, 71% members are men, even though the population is only 49% male. And lastly, we feel that the inclusion of one individual who has previously worked for the city but was voted out of office is an inappropriate choice for the G-PAC. And it is unlikely that the majority of Campbell residents would currently endorse his position on the G-PAC as a political, sorry, a political appointee, where he would be expected to directly help draft general plan goals. Given the importance of the G-PAC and the revision, we respectfully ask that the process be redone.
Thank you. I had a couple of questions, anyone else have questions? So for Campbell Village Neighborhood Association, where exactly are you guys located?
Mine, I think, is the outside street, Central Park, and it goes through the curtain, it's a newer.
Yes, the Cambrian area with.
Yes.
That's, yes, you guys changed the name.
And I'm new to the area too, so it's a year and a half to the area.
You just changed the name, that's what caught me. So how many people, because that's been a pretty active group when it was Cambrian 36, is it still pretty active, still have a large membership?
Yes.
Excellent, thank you. And the next speaker is Audrey Keitreiber. And that's our last speaker card that we have for this evening, so if anyone else in the audience would like to speak, please fill out a speaker card and give it to Wendy.
Audrey Keitreiber, 1509 Walnut Drive, speaking as the president of STACK, the Santa Musaire Community Coalition. Our area comprises one-third of the city of Campbell, approximately 3,500 households, just the question I think you're going to ask at some point. We, you know, we feel similarly to what was already expressed here. We really feel that, there were three people on, at least that I saw, that were on the G-PAC committee. And these people have brought, they have excellent experience and they have years of service in the city of Campbell in positions of either elected or appointed officials. But Paul, if you can go back to slide, I think, two, where one of the big goals here was not to have people that are, you know, elected or appointed, even though these people are not active, they have a wide history, which brings great experience, but also, I'm sorry, it also can bring biases that have been developed through their years of service and knowledge and information that other people on the G-PAC aren't going to have and that can color the direction of the G-PAC. So, there's something to be said for allowing enthusiastic citizens who have come in without preconceived notions to participate in the process. You can have a tabula rusa or clean slate with people who can bring fresh eyes, fresh minds to the problems of developing a general plan that works to ensure that it will be a strong foundation document for building the future of our city. We have several questions. Clarify the role of alternates in respect to their participation in all G-PAC meetings. Who are the city staff members or if any who are part of the G-PAC? Who are additional participants? There were a number of people who attended the July 20th, 2015 workshop who are not listed as G-PAC members. Are there notes taken or other memorandum available to the public after each meeting? What is the schedule for the general plan meetings and what timeframe is the city adhering to? One more. Finally, are the general plan review meetings open to the public to observe? We would like to urge you to consider reopening the selection process by adding more community member positions to allow for more balanced representation.
Thank you. Do you mind asking those questions one at a time and I'll answer them real quick?
Sure. And you have, you should all have this document in front of you as well, it was a desk item.
I have a lot of papers right now. I don't have one that has.
It has the really big STACK logo with the tree and the hands and the house.
I didn't read the back part, I'm sorry. Okay, well then, I have the questions here, so then we'll close the public hearing and then we'll get to, I'll knock them out. Yeah, next speaker is Joanne Fairbanks. Thank you for filling out a card, Joanne.
My name is Joanne Fairbanks, I'm a resident of Campbell. Two comments on this item. One was on the bylaws, which I'll defer to another time based upon the city attorney's counsel. My only other comment is around the purposing statement. I think this is extremely important, not only because it will focus the G-PAC, but because it is an anchoring statement from which that advisory committee can work. It's a grounding and I think it's extremely important. The other part of that for me would be, keep it simple, like a one or two liner would be helpful. And that's my comments tonight, thank you.
Thank you, Joanne. Is there anyone else in the public that would like to comment on this issue? Go once, go twice? I went to an auction this morning, that's why I have this auction thing in my head. So with that, we'll close the public hearing and we will bring it back for comments. I'm going to run through, just to answer some of these questions, because that's kind of easy to do. So to clarify the roles of alternates, that will be done, that's not done tonight, but we will be able to organize that. There are no staff members who are part of the Gil PAC. There are no additional participants. We will have minutes taken, as was noted, so those notes that are taken, those will be accessible. We do not have a schedule for the meetings, we don't even know who the consultant is going to be that's going to be organizing them. And the general plan review meetings will not be open to the public. You will have opportunity to comment at these meetings and you'll have opportunity to comment and educate yourself through, oh, Bill's grabbing the microphone.
The meetings will not legally be required to be open to the public, whether.
Excuse me.
I don't know that if there's going to be any intention to prohibit any member of the public attending, I'd be surprised if that were the case.
I'm sorry for misspeaking there and thank you for clarifying. Yeah, so that answers those. And then, in regards to the Campbell Village Neighborhood Association, for the selection process, do you mind if I speak in regards to kind of our position for that? As we went through the selection process, you know, it's broken down, 71% are male, 49% of Campbell are male. The majority of the people that we selected, we actually took a map, noted every single person that was down on a map, so there are some neighborhoods that aren't represented because no one applied. We selected 20 people out of about 50, 55 applications. So, and over half of them, about half of them were in the downtown. So for the rest of the surrounding communities, no one applied. So that makes it really hard to be able to be truly diverse. And when you look at the people that we picked, there's a lot of people in there that I had never met, I'd never heard of, that had never been active, and then a couple that were. And I think we did a really good job of being able to find, there was only one renter. That was the one thing that I felt that we were really missing, is we didn't have the rental community well represented. But for the rest of the community, we did do our best and we put a lot of time into going through it and checking and seeing about what the options were and trying to make sure that, you know, for one person that has this type of outlook, we have another person that has a contradictory type of outlook, to make sure that we'd be able to find a comfortable middle ground to work with and to guide the city that would be a good representation of the community at large. I believe we found that and one of the reasons that I feel that we did find that is because there were two separate groups that made them. And the other group had almost the exact same as what Paul and I had put together on the selection committee. And so when you have two groups of two that go through, you know, 55, 56 people, whatever it was, and you find that almost the exact same people were selected, I think it was between 75 and 80% of the same people. And we did cut down the list, right? We cut down the list by a couple. We cut down the list by a couple. So I think that that shows that this was a good group, a good representation. There might be an individual or two who someone doesn't like. Can't say every single person on there is my favorite person in the world, but either way, I believe that they're good representatives of the community. So, I mean, I got to kind of back that. And once I found out afterwards, the city manager's choices, I was like, oh, gosh, that's actually pretty close to us. That's nice. That was very nice. And then, I think, I think that answers the questions there. And then, I'll, any other comments from council? I mean, we got to have something somewhere. Councilman begins.
You're opening up the discussion?
Yeah.
Okay.
If you don't mind, if you'd like to correct anything I said, or...
No, nothing at all. I misunderstood your, I misunderstood your question.
Did your question of comments on what you were saying? No, I'll defer to...
I didn't say it very well. This is getting a little late.
Okay. So, thank you to the council for putting this item on the agenda. You know that it is of a deep concern of mine, and I want to thank staff also for putting together the material they did. I think the content and items raised in the PowerPoint, outlined in the PowerPoint, identify that we needed to have this meeting. There were a lot of unknowns, a lot of things that the staff needed to come back to the council, because the meeting that we had was a study session. Nothing was decided at a study session. And this is the purpose of this meeting, to make decisions. And I have a little bit of a presentation to make, so I would ask your indulgence to let me go on, and then we'll come back. So you'll see a lot of overlap with what the staff has said. The three most important topics that I feel have been missing from the discussion to date and have been picked up to some extent by the staff report is the purpose of the general plan, two, the role of the council in the process of updating the general plan, and three, the priorities for the process. Ideally, by the end of the evening, the council will be able to support motions related to expanding the purpose of the general plan, and I'll define that. Initiating the general, the G-PAC with a recognition that it does, in fact, need to be a Brown acted committee. I know we've gotten some new information this afternoon from, from the city attorney, but I have, I have a discussion that hopefully will clarify that the G-PAC does have, in fact, need to be a Brown acted committee. I do not think the Form 700s are necessary, but there's some debate about that. But I'm not sure, oh, I'll go into that. And the third is addressing the risks of a two and a half year or longer process. So thank you in advance for your time and attention. The general plan is a legal, it's a technical document, basically used to define and negotiate the development in a community, the type and location of development in our community. The approval process is corralled by regulations such as ordinances and specific plans. As such, the general plan can be subjectively implemented, and I use the image, like the growing of a watermelon in a square box. If you pull all of this information together, you can end up with something weird and boring, like a watermelon in the shape of a box. A proposed project is further manipulated by government regulations, such as the relationship of a project to a project development area, if it's a housing project, the PDAs. And that's part of the housing element, as a way to obtain money for cities, such as how we were helped to get money for the portal project. So there's a nexus between this. Let's do what the futurist Rebecca Ryan told us. Let's think of scenarios outside the watermelon growing in the square box. How might the general plan of the future differ? What is its potential? In fact, the future is happening now around Campbell. The functionality of a general plan has drastically changed, that's why we know we have to do something, and it's changing as we speak. For example, Mountain View established a 2 million square foot maximum development in its North Bay Shore area. Rather than have individual proposals come in and singularly evaluated, there was a win-win resolution, when the city council interviewed all the bidders and selected a mix of projects because of what each contributed, beyond the basics, what each contributed to the fabric of the city. Cupertino uses a community form diagram, which establishes what uses can go where, not unlike our land use map, but it has an additional level of an umbrella of established square footage maximums for each type of housing, hotel, retail, manufacturing. The proposals brought forward are evaluated on what community benefits are provided along with the compliance to the general plan and ordinance. So it's, it's a reversal of just staying within the box of the general plan. It's looking at a whole new tool of understanding how the general plan can be implemented. So Campbell, we know, may not have the luxury of ignoring the potential financial benefits of projects in the PDA, but wherever in the city, development can work within the fabric of the community, not occupy the community. The development can work within the fabric of the community, not occupy the community. Setting the purpose of the general plan, Campbell has the opportunity to recognize and think of our city as in the driver's seat. As Rebecca indicated, this is an optimistic, seasonal mindset, not to exclude the bad times, but to have a positive framework of where you start understanding and developing. The purpose of the general plan, the Envision Campbell 2040, sets the attitude of how we want our community to evolve and develop, as everything contributing to the community that we have and value as it grows, and not lose that as it grows. So only the council, as staff report said, only the council has the knowledge and perspective to set the purpose of the next generation general plan. We've all been elected to represent all the citizens of Campbell. So what is the role of the council if not to engage with the potential of the future? We want to help find a balance of jobs and housing, schools and recreation, safety and traffic, open space and public transit, sustainability and economic development, all aspects of the elements in a general plan, the existing plus the new. All of this will culminate, culminate in addressing the long-term security, financial security, and quality of life in Campbell. Can we look at the purpose of the general plan to be a positive starting point for Campbell, not as a reactionary one, but as a positive one, where everything we do contributes to Campbell as Campbell? So I'm pointing out, as you've heard from some of the speakers tonight, that the establishment of the G-PAC got off to a rocky start. I think, from what the mayor has said earlier, the G-PAC ended up being selected by council subcommittee. And I think that we were not in the study session in June anticipating a subcommittee. The two council members, the mayor and the council member on it, were a vestige of a previous discussion about planning for the futurist presentation. And because it was a study session, it didn't have the force of action, of a council action, but it kept moving the train, got on the tracks, and kept on going. So I do think that although the members have been appointed, the council has not taken formal action to establish a G-PAC or to define the role, its role in the G-PAC. We're talking about it now, which is great. But on, how is the council, the G-PAC staff and consultant, working together? On this point, there's an excerpt from the staff report that I found troubling. Although, and this is the quote, "Although a status report, as staff has indicated, is beneficial for council connection to the update process, any direction provided could be viewed as influencing the process." Is this really an expectation that direction from the elected council will negatively influence the update process? Is this what you really think will have a bad influence...
Yes.
...on it? If I may finish. Frankly, that makes no sense. I'm happy to understand why people think the council, as elected representatives of the community, would have a negative, bad effect on the product of the general plan. Accepting the general, the G-PAC as a group of representatives from the community, interested in developing the Envision Campbell 2040, how do they have standing in a process without the council formally approving the existence of a G-PAC? How can they work with staff and the consultant and have meetings and provide recommendations and post information on city webpages and come with information filtered by staff to the council and have no standing, have no legal definition? They're not a commission, they're not a sanctioned committee, they're a collection of individuals. Are they, as a collection of individuals, to make the decisions about Campbell's future and not the elected officials of Campbell? I don't understand that. And again, the city attorney can clarify for me. As far as I understood at the time of the study session and the conversations that we've had to date, there were two primary reasons why the G-PAC was supposed to not be appointed by the council, was that it would then become a body that would require noticing of their meetings under the Brown Act, and that it may or may not have to comply with the Political Reform Act. Am I saying that correctly? Is it really worth having, not having to post meeting notices, to have a detachment and disengagement of the community members and the council? The process that's presented and proposed shows that the interaction between the council and the G-PAC is filtered through the staff. Does this mean that all the council can do is react to what is given? Where is the direction where we, as the elected officials, provide? So what are the options for the council to interact with the G-PAC? Only via staff reports, which is what's currently proposed, we could, in fact, identify and select a council subcommittee, like all other major aspects of work we do here. The Civic Center Master Plan had a task force, the Joint Powers has a subcommittee members, the JPA committees we have, our subcommittees, Finance Subcommittee, Economic Development Subcommittee. It's a format of interaction between the council and the communities and businesses that then allows that information to be brought directly back to the council. Or we could do a task force, which is similar to the very successful structure in 2001, with a council and commission representatives. In fact, there were three council members on that, to make sure that the council was comfortable with the dialogue. The task force could report directly to the council, similar to a council subcommittee. Working with the staff report and accepting the G-PAC, my caution is that staff will do its best to facilitate the functionality of the G-PAC, and the consultant will provide the technical resource and produce the product. But engagement and dialogue with the council seems so missing from this proposal that staff's asking us to evaluate. I would like us to really think about that. And finally, the priorities of the general plan. And I've said that this is important to understand, and I say that because I think the priorities are defined as risks. And what is the risk to the quality of life in Campbell if the general plan update takes two to seven years? What are the components of a, of a general plan? What's not functioning in the 2001 general plan? Certainly, interaction among all the elements, as staff has said, to some agree, and the EIR process are all critical to blend and make the update functional. But there's been no or minimum, excuse me, mention of how updating the ordinances fit into this. And the ordinance really are the rules that implement the general plan, and they are critical. Ordnances are an area that would benefit from evaluation of what works and what doesn't. Could this be a concurrent activity that provides valuable feedback into the elements, such as the land use and transportation? How are we going to pull that together? It's often done sequentially, but when we're tweaking a document, doing it concurrently might be of significant benefit. What options, what options might we have to reduce the risk? We could try different things to, if the priorities of the general plan update can be defined with the context of risk, that would inform our process. And we have options that can help us resolve risk while the general plan is going on. I mean, those things include implementing a housing impact fee. I use that as an example, because we've recently discussed it. We could also do things like emergency legislation. It's important for us to define the purpose of the general plan update, and I'm going to use it as a frame of mind to take the document as more than a bricks and mortar, rules and regulations. There has to be an underlying core value of the purpose. So I think that if we come to a discussion, as staff has outlined, I phrase the questions a little bit differently. One, might the purpose of Envision Campbell 2040 expand so that we no longer have a built growth environment that's like watermelons in the form, grown in the form of a box, but can they really be richer and give community benefits back to the city as a whole? Two, how might we, as elected officials, engage directly with the formally established public committee in a dialogue for the quality future of Campbell? Why not participate? Why not have elected officials participate? I don't understand why not. And three... And three, what are the risks for Campbell while the current general plan is in force and how can we mitigate the risk?
Okay. I'll address a couple of the issues. And first, just for myself, you want this to be a shorter timeframe, right?
I would like us to understand what the risks of the current general plan are and how those risks can be mitigated. And this is where the consultant can help us. They can say, you know, you really need to do it sequentially, one step at a time. If that's what they say, that's fine. I don't want it to be a foregone conclusion. I'm simply bringing out the question and not have a foregone conclusion that there's only one way to do this. And the way I bring that out is by saying, what are we risking and how can we mitigate the risks while we're doing the general plan? Are there other options?
That's one problem we're probably going to have when we get to the selection portion of the, after the RFP process, because everyone, and when you look at the questions, the questions, they have to qualify their experience. Their experience means they've done this before and pretty much everyone uses a very similar pattern.
I take exception to that.
That's the thing. If we were able to find someone, that'd be great. I love the outside the box, be able to figure something out. But for the process that we have laid out right now and expecting a two and a half year process, which is very short, for the G-PAC, that's only 36 hours of work. They get two hours a month. That's nothing. So when we're talking about all these different elements and the whole general plan, they get 36 hours of work. And then we get a month in the middle where staff is able to shuffle things around to coordinate it. But, you know, when you look at it like that, that kind of helps, like for me, that really helps put my hands around the idea that, why two and a half years almost never works. And then also, a couple of things that were said, the G-PAC was not selected by the subcommittee that was selected by the city manager, and then we do have a subcommittee for this that we all voted on already.
We did not.
But we all voted on it, right?
We did not.
So we were just...
It was a study session.
Let me try to answer that for you. When we, when we were working on selecting people to participate on the forecasting for the future, I was going to be selecting a subcommittee. It was you two who volunteered to say, we'll help you make that selection. Then came the issue, I think this might have been in the study, we would like the general plan advisory committee members to be a part of the forecasting for the future. So you, in essence, carried down both of those because you were helping me select for the forecasting for the future, which you wanted to have the general plan advisory committee.
Turned over.
So ultimately, you advised me, I took your advice, but you advised me on who to select for the forecasting for the future and for the general plan advisory committee. So I made those appointments, I sent out the letters, and I did all of that, but I did pay attention to what you two said. And as you pointed out, our lists were virtually the same. There were some differences. And it usually is wise to pay attention to council members if you're the city manager. So since we were not very far apart, I was very comfortable making the appointments, which I made. But that's how they came together. So the council selected you all to do the forecast for the future. And then when the decision was made to try to have general plan advisory committee members there, that's how the application came, and that's how you kind of went forward with that. And then the other people who showed up at the forecast for the future were council members and one member from each of the...
Commissions.
Commissions and the superintendent of the Campbell Union School District.
Yeah, and then, and then you asked a lot of questions. For me, the main reason that I support not having any council members on the G-PAC is purely because the people that are going to be on there will be heavily influenced by a council member, and I don't want that. We do represent the community at large, but I want the community at large to be the ones that do this. I don't want to have any single council member come on there and control or dominate the meeting. And I believe the people and personalities that we selected as well will not do that.
You made an assumption on what I said incorrectly, if I may clarify.
Please.
I'm not saying that there would be council members on the G-PAC. I'm suggesting that their council have a subcommittee approved by all of us or a task force that works directly with the general G-PAC, not at every meeting, but has a working relationship with the G-PAC and that represents, has represented, ideally has representatives from various commissions to help understand what the value of those commissions, I'm thinking of the HPB, for example, that isn't represented right now in any of the dialogue. And I don't have any problem whatsoever with what I think the city manager would define as the general plan vision coming out of, growing out of a community process. Absolutely fine. I'll even move forward with the composition of the G-PAC. I do, I do take exception to the process, but it's water under the bridge. What I found so concerning was what I read to you, which is that the council members can't talk, can't dialogue, can't, can't work. It says, "Although a status report prepared by staff on a monthly basis is a benefit for council connection with the update process, any direction provided by the council could be viewed as influencing the process." Why can't we influence the process? Not the G-PAC, but influence the process? Understand and negotiate and from, with each other and all the other community members to produce a product?
That line right there could have been a quote from me at the study session we had, because that's my fear, is that we will influence, one of us or two of us will influence it. And the way that the makeup is going right now, there's only going to be three of us.
But why shouldn't it? I'm sorry, why shouldn't we influence it? Just saying you don't want it to. I don't understand why.
The idea of, the idea of one person dominating the conversation and influencing it that way.
How about two council members?
Still, that, yeah, I mean...
So if you don't mind me jumping in on this. So, look, I think that there's a distinction you're making between influencing the process and influencing the day-to-day decisions, and I think that that's, to me, that's where the difference lies. I am in favor of a strong council role at the end of this and maybe at interstitials when, maybe after each element, you come and say, hey, reality check, is this really, you know, as you said, the, each element won't really be final final because some of them have to do anything, and that may be a good check-in point for council to say, look, you know, we've got some concerns about how you did this. I also think that we should have a fair amount of say, and I think that the list that Director Kamoyan put in here that sort of captures our comments, I hope that that and some of the comments that Councilmember Gibbons said tonight, in terms of the substantive changes we'd like to see, the areas we'd like them to focus on and not focus on, gets transmitted well. I think some of our best, in terms of influencing the substance of the G-PAC, comes now when we say, look, most of us, I think, aren't interested in a wholesale, like getting rid of the transit-oriented development process or, you know, reducing density in the PDA area, sort of things like, that we don't want them to spin their wheels on. A number of us are interested in a health element, those kinds of things that you captured. We have input there. Maybe we have input in terms of, particularly if the process is not working well or if we have concerns about the way the process is working. But I think that, that said, the mayor's, I would side with the mayor in terms of, we don't want to usurp the role of the, of the G-PAC.
But nothing I've proposed says that.
Well, but I think that there's a concern, so it's a matter of determining where the difference is in what you're proposing versus, I think the concern is influencing the actual, the discussion in the day-to-day. So if I may finish, let me finish my work here. So, and so I think maybe, maybe we're coming to agreement that we don't want to influence their decisions day-to-day, but we do want to have input from time, from time to time. And I think that for them, a lot of times, that input will be limited to, here's how the process is working, we think, or not working, and here's how it can be fixed. And we can do this, especially with a good consultant who's done this, we can, we can do it as we go. And we can, we can say a little bit, like, look, if this thing is going off the rails and staff, and staff will be there and involved, they won't be members, they can say that or we can, you can learn that from our usual reports and try to, and try to work it. Because I do think it's important, and I know that you say that none of your proposals will lead to this end, I do think it's important that we don't usurp the role of the G-PAC as they, as they work through the process. I think we give them input in the beginning, and at the end, I absolutely agree with you that it is council's decision. And I said this last time, that if they come back and say, get rid of the Ainsley House, we don't like it, they say, put an 18-story building in downtown, I would say, no, sorry, thank you for your time, but we're doing something different because we're elected and, and we're responsible to all the voters. I absolutely believe in what you're saying in terms of the strength of council's role, the appropriateness of council's role in making the ultimate decision, in making sure they don't waste their time on things that they shouldn't because they're, we're going to end up going a different way, and helping guide where they do spend their very limited time. You know, I think that's, that's important. I have other items, I don't know if you want.
If I, if I, just, if you could help me understand along this of how the input would work. So I've used an example of the definition of open space is problematic. It says 500 square feet per unit, and we're using three feet by 30 foot, five-foot balconies as defining as, as the open space requirement. I think that should be discussed, and I want to bring that up. I would like that brought up. I'd like to have a discussion. We're going to have significant changes on parking requirements and the state's going to further reductions. I'd like to know, can we have a requirement for zip car parking? Can we have a pullover for, what's the other guy? The free drive, the driver thing?
Lyft?
Uber, Uber Lyft. Another idea is understanding the density bonus. The city attorney has done some additional research, and that issue really isn't resolved yet. So I'd like to ask, you know, where are we going to stand with the density bonus and how are we going to use that? And maybe, there's one crazy idea, but it's an idea. I'm not dictating, it's a crazy idea, which is, right now, when we lose all of this parking, we have cars parking on the street, no matter what anybody says. Five years from now, 10 years, 90% sure, probably, five years from now, maybe a little. Can we require developers to leave open space undeveloped and let them bank the land for future development, but provide at-grade parking? And could that at-grade parking be available to the community as a whole? These are all kinds of things that I really liked about the Mountain View and Cupertino approaches, these community benefit approaches. So I'm looking for a mechanism, if you can help me how, to work these questions, these thoughts, and anything else into the process. I don't see it.
So here's, I think I see it, I hope I see it, which is, first of all, you say it from the dais and you say it to staff, and you say it to the consultants, and I'm hoping part of what the consultants will do is come talk to us and say, are there particular issues or elements you're concerned about? If some of those, some of those out-of-the-box ideas are going to take a whole lot of time from the G-PAC, hopefully, the consultant comes back, talks to all of us and say, you know, how much is this really an issue or not? And then also, once, you know, once the element that deals with open space comes back, and if, even though you mentioned it to the consultant yourself or mentioned it to the, to staff yourself, if it doesn't talk about the balcony issue, then we can see it and say, you know what, hey, guys, could you come take a look at this again and take a look at that balcony issue? But not messing with the process while it's happening. And especially not having council members talk, especially only one or two, talking to them and influencing them. You know, I mean, frankly, I felt on Civic Center Master Plan a little bit like my voice was, like, I was reluctant to speak as I did anyway, but I didn't want to outweigh the concerns of other folks or misrepresent that I'm the whole council or anything. So I think that's the mechanism, or a mechanism like that could work. So you do it at times, before the process, through the staff and consultants, you do it at interstitials, maybe once the, once the elements are first draft, you know, when it comes back to us. I think that's, that's the way to do it. I do want to say that Cupertino and Mountain View are cities unlike any other cities on the planet right now, and that's not an exaggeration. I don't think we can do a beauty contest to the extent they are doing. I agree with, I agree with some community benefit stuff, but we can't. I mean, we don't, frankly, we aren't, we aren't ready to permit the amount of development that would make those beauty contests real. I mean, we don't, except for maybe Del Avenue, the Del Avenue Plan, that's the only area where I could see us doing something like that, but otherwise, I don't, I don't see the analogy. Let me, let me just go quickly finish. I can talk fast, my other bits, and I will try not to go over everything. I'm fine with the way that, I mean, like, the process could have been done better in terms of making sure that every council member was, was understanding how it all worked. At the end of the day, I am very impressed with how the results came out. I know it didn't come out gender equally, and I regret that, and I know it didn't come out equally in terms of neighborhood, but I know that what these folks have said tonight, Jeff said, and I've, is that they set things down on a map, and they thought about those things. I know that the city manager thought about those things and tried to get representation from different neighborhoods and different areas. And I'll tell you, there was, there's one member of that G-PAC who wrote a letter to the editor to a newspaper calling the entire council idiots. And he got selected, it was a past council, but three of us were on the council at the time, he got selected by the G-PAC, to the G-PAC. That gives me confidence in the process. That gives me confidence that the fix wasn't in, that this isn't intentionally slanted towards one, you know, only buddies of the council or only buddies of a certain neighborhood. I mean, when you put somebody on the, on G-PAC that called you an idiot, you're doing a pretty good job. It's the Doris Kearns, Goodwin, Lincoln, Team of Rivals approach, which I subscribe to, I think is the right way to do things. I think that's what happened here. I mean, I, look, and I'll tell you, those of you who directly attacked one of the members because he didn't win his election, I think you should be ashamed of yourself. I think that electability is not a criteria for this. I think that almost nobody, if not nobody on that would get, would win, would win election. This is a hard job. That man gave a lot of time, a lot of his personal effort for very little pay, and he's now willing to sign up again because he loves Campbell so much. Think before you take shots at folks like that, because it's really not fair. It's really not nice. Anybody else who wants to run for an election from G-PAC, go ahead and do it. It's not easy, and it really is, you know, somebody who gave up a lot of his time and effort and blood and sweat and tears on this, on this, and I'm impressed that he's willing to re-up for another, you know, this doesn't pay anything, and it takes a lot of time and effort, a lot of late nights. And I think, that's it. Probably not, but it's late.
Will we keep going around? Councilmember Rosenthal?
Okay, thank you. I do want to, Councilmember Gibbons, address a couple of things you said, but first, if I can, follow up to the vice mayor on the G-PAC selection. So it's very easy to look at that list and pick gender, for example, but when you're looking at a fixed number of applications, you have considerations of geographical diversity, gender, age, occupation, interests, affiliations, neighborhood association, social, service clubs, whatever. I think, I think we came up with a very broad, diverse group. Vice mayor pointed out somebody who, who, if we didn't want to have a diverse opinion on there, wouldn't be on there, but the idea was, the knowledge is an excellent thing, the experience is an excellent thing, and I think the willingness to participate of that person, the process is an excellent thing. So I, I stand by that. Councilmember Gibbons, if I can go back now to, to this, I think there's an idea here or a concern that the council has given up its rights or responsibilities to be part of the process. So let me, let me explain why I don't think that's the case. How did we get there? So we even opened this up because we recognized from the community that there were concerns about this document and where this document leads the city. We didn't have to open it up. We could have opened it up and chose what we thought was important. We could have pointed out that this document is younger than at least three of our area plans, that people seem to like but don't like it. That's fine, but there was a community that wanted to open it up. And, and the reason to open it up to the community and not to this body was that that document defines where the city goes, and it should handle, it should have the community, represent community value... represent community values, community concerns, directions that the community would like to go in, and they do that on an advisory basis. So to say that we, we are giving up our rights, if we look in the staff report, the G-PAC will be advisory to the city council, who will inevitably be the decision-maker of recommendations from the G-PAC. So, so we don't give up anything. I hear, I heard Director Kremoyan write, when there are elements, we can receive an element that's, that's not voted on, because, as you say, the next element could affect the first element, but we have an ability there to put input to it. We have an ability to put input to it through staff. The G-PAC doesn't operate with a consultant alone, there is a, call it a staff advisory committee. So you raise a good point of, what do the commissions do, and the concerns of the commissions and HPP, for example, which probably very few people recognize or understand, that why is it a board, and not something else? Well, the, the SAC, it's called Staff Advisory Committee, consists of the Recreation and Community Services Director, Public Works Director, Chief of Police, Finance Director, Community Development Director, City Manager. Every staff liaison to those committees, or commissions, boards, works for this, a member on this SAC, and there isn't, but this, so, and the SAC deals with the consultant. So I think there is, there are plenty of opportunities to interact, just not during the formal process of the meeting. And it would concern me to do that. When I hear people don't like a particular, actually, three members of 17, first of all, I'm pleased with that, that's actually not bad, if we only, only upset people on three, but I guarantee you, so, so if you eliminate those three, by the way, because you don't like the way they voted or spoke out before, believe me, there are people on the other side that would have to be eliminated for their positions against something. We would wipe out almost everybody here, except for the, the subset of people that we never heard of before, which was great to see. And I think, by the way, looking at what we did at the futurist meeting, everybody interacted quite well. I had at my table a very differing opinion of things, very good interaction, though there was no agreement, there were not agreements on a lot of things, but we ultimately came out with a project, and, and it worked very well. Actually, when we got focused on doing a project, we forgot about all those concerns about this or that, we did our project, and we wanted to win, and we put, and we did it together. So I think there's an ability to do that. Your concern of, why does it have to take two to seven years? I, I don't remember somebody saying specifically seven years, but we don't know how, the shorter period would be good, the problem is that the way to shorten it would be, number one, don't take the community input. Well, that, that, we're not supporting, that's why the G-PAC exists. So we wouldn't do that. The second way to do it would be to influence them on what to look at, because of our own biases, and I don't think we want to do that. So we do want a policy statement that, that says what they should be doing, and what the ultimate goal of this is, but if, if any one of us, or say, three of us feel that a specific element is good, I think we've given up, we've given up our ability to say, yep, that element's good, let's take it off the table. No, we're saying, what do you think, community, right? We're saying, what do you think it should be, and come back to us. We may disagree at the end of the day, as Vice Mayor Baker said, we may not want to put an 18-story building up, wherever your other extreme example was, but we're, we're saying, what, what's important to you? Otherwise, we could shorten it by determining what they should focus on, but why would we do that?
But you've misunderstood what I said.
So, so, and correct me if I'm wrong. So, so why would it take long? And I don't know how long it'll take. My, my guess is, because we're talking two-hour meetings once a month, you know, two years is on the low end for the G-PAC, but I could be wrong. I, I don't know what the interaction's going to be, but why will it take a long time? Well, it's, as Director Kremoyan said, a comprehensive update, so what does that mean? That considers all the elements, it considers all the elements, not to change all the elements, but to determine which elements you would like to change or address, and you can't do that without addressing them all. So this group has to go through the four questions, I think they're in there, what works now, what needs refining or tweaking, whatever you want to call it, what isn't working, and does that mean it gets thrown out, and there's a major rework of it, and also, probably as, as long as any of these, what needs adding? We talked about elements to add, and I heard at the study session, from education, climate, economic development, health, there may have been one other, that's why it's going to take a long time, and if we don't do that, then, and we, and we limit their ability to focus on things, then we're not going to get the communities, we're not going to get with the community once we get what we want through the community. I don't think that was our intent. So, so that's why I like the idea of the G-PAC as it is, without commissioners, without council, but with input from commissions and council to staff, and through the city manager, or through the, if you forget, Staff Advisory Committee, to work with the consultant, whoever that is. And, and lastly, not knowing who that consultant is, you, you raised some points of, we have to allow for this discussion on parking, or whatever it was. We have an ability directly or through staff to have concerns before the process, I think, to the consultant, and say, these are the areas that we are concerned about, and you, you personally, like a Recka Ryan, can facilitate that without pushing what we, so, so she wouldn't have taken what we wanted on there regarding parking, or the solution, she would have said, this is an issue we need to address, and steal the conversation.
Which is all I've ever said.
And I think, I think that that all can be done with this, I think it actually can't be done if the representatives of the council or commissions on there, but it, but it can without there, I think it's better without.
Councilmember Kottowski?
Thank you. Okay, I'm, no, I'm not going to talk that long. Couple of things that I think we should address and not forget, is the general plan as a document, does have life to it, and it can be changed as we move along, and let's hope when it is established, or revised, or whatever we're going to see done to it, that it doesn't become hard as a rock, and we can't move it or shape it. And I think that's, that's part of what we're asking the members of the public to do. I, I kind of look at what we're proposing here, G-PAC is, in my mind, is let the horses run, give them some open space, let them, let them take a look at the city maybe differently than the five of us see it, or have seen it. And the only thing it needs to be there is, with them, is, I guess, staff, or some members of staff, who have a certain amount of experience and wisdom, and can hold on to those reins when the, the horses are running, and make sure that if you have to pull the brake once in a while to slow them down, or change direction a little bit, you do have to have that, because we're asking people who may have, and I only know eight names on this list, out of 17, we're asking 17 people plus alternates to make decisions about something they probably don't have a lot of knowledge about, in terms of operation, and what makes things go. So keeping that in mind, and this, as I said, being a living document, there's, there's things we have to take into consideration, and, and I'm not going to get all tied up in the legalities, or what we should do as a council, I'm just saying that, remember this, we're always on the road, one end of its history, that's where we've come from, we're in the middle of it, no matter where you place yourself, we're in the present. And what we're doing is, we're looking down the road to see where we want to be. If this document planning takes a year and a half, two years, three years, I'll tell you what, in a year and a half, two of us aren't going to be on this council, you're going to have two new faces up here. And if it goes beyond four, I think there's going to be a few more faces up here. So the idea is to try and at least complete it within the space of when there are familiar people that you out here can work with. If, if that doesn't happen, then I think we've missed, we've missed where we're going, the target's gone. With respect to the Brown Act, the Brown Act, it literally means the Open Meeting Act, and it is a law that was established in, what, 1971? Wrong, wrong, anyway. Yeah, see, history. But what it says, ladies and gentlemen, is, we can't have a meeting and, and do the, the city's business without you having the knowledge that we're here doing that business, and that's what agendas are for, being published ahead of time and so forth. With this particular group, the way it's being proposed, honestly, Liz, I don't, I understand, it's a very emotional thing for you, but I've been around this business 17 years, doing, doing what I'm doing here. I don't have a problem, I trust, I trust the public to come up with some bright new ideas, I don't probably have. And I'm not bound by things I've done to try and tell other people what they should do. I want to hear, I'm a school teacher, so, you know, this, this is, that was another one of my things I didn't like. So the important part is, is let the students perhaps do a little training for us, and in the end, we're going to have to massage this whole thing, and say, yeah, you did a great job, let's move ahead, and that's, that's the way I'm going to look at it, while I'm here. Thank you.
Councilmember Resnick?
One comment, and, and from Councilmember Kottowski. I know the comment was made earlier, I think Audrey it was, it's a clean slate, you've been involved 17 years, and, and very involved in the community as much as anybody, and don't know more than half the people on the list. And the other half that you know are a mix of probably opinions, and are, and are qualified to be on there, I think it, I think that's a clean slate. I mean, to, to the idea to have 17 people that nobody knows is, is a big risk, obviously. The idea to have 70 people, everybody knows, you know where it's going, I think that's, I'm sorry, I just had to point out, that justifies to me the, the success of the list.
Vice Mayor Baker?
I just wanted to, to add my vote towards that this should be as open and transparent as possible, the meetings should be noticed as much as we can, they should be available, open, you know, no locked doors, essentially to the extent that we can comply with the Brown Act, even if we don't have to, I think we ought to. And I, and I commend you all for staying here this late, and I hope you'll attend some of those meetings, and you can tell us, you know, keep, keep telling us how it's, how it's going, because this is the public's process, and having it open and transparent is part of that.
I do agree. So, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, since it is getting late, we still have these pieces up there that we need some feedback on, and I don't want to keep you that much later, so if I could get some feedback on the points.
Are we going to be creating the purpose statement right now?
Or somewhat like...
Kiss, huh?
You know, we can, we can try to, let's get some ideas, we had some ideas from the public, keep it simple is really good. So, maybe answer some of the other things first, I don't know, I just know that this is something that you all wanted to do, and I don't want it to get too late.
Yeah, we've hit a lot of these, so the, the RFP, that did come out, the majority of us would like the idea of the RFP, if I'm not mistaken, because we talked about wanting a consultant, so is the process for the RFP, the RFP process, is that acceptable too?
I'm going to have one question.
You don't have a light on yet?
So, so just going back to the purpose statement, staff is suggesting that the council prepare the purpose statement, because you're the one that initiated the general plan, but if you decide that you want the G-PAC to prepare the purpose statement, then you can defer that.
I, I believe that we can do it, that wasn't exactly on my list for today, or I probably would have prepared a little something. I don't know about everyone else, but I think a lot of us would have came a little more prepared, finding that was going to be hitting on there today. We can always continue that portion of the item, have that come back, and, and we can hand out some of the cash out, excuse me, some of the issues there. So we talked about the second item, and, staff rules, we didn't really hit on the third item very much, staff rules and responsibilities, but it sounds like, well, we did hit it a little bit, but, yeah, it'd be intermediary in regards to that, so, yeah, we actually did get into that a little bit.
Through the SAC, through that committee?
Yeah, which I, I agree upon that form. And then, I, to me, the RFP with the questions and stuff, the only thing is that they do, to an extent, limit the proposers, but I don't want someone coming in here, and I could think of a, a specific situation where I watched someone do an excellent presentation, and really threw the wool over a, a group's eyes. So I, I would, even though I would like to see more of an outside-the-box presentation from a variety of people with different ideas of how to do it, we need to have an understanding of their qualifications, so, and, and that limits that outside-of-the-box thinking, if you will. So what we have in there, I mean, for, from what I thought about it, I think that, because that, that one I did put a lot of thought into, read a lot of RFPs and gone through that process a few times, so I like what you guys have been able to prepare, and was able to think of slight modifications, but nothing that would really improve it. So, I mean, that, that's just my two cents. Councilmember Resnick?
Yeah, my, on the RFP, so my comment would be, I thought that the two-step process for selection was backwards, frankly. I, I understand why it's in there, it's in there that we look at duration and the cost, and then from that, we look at the, the qualifications, but I'm more concerned of flipping that and saying, what are, what consultants are qualified to do this job, from that, then let's look at the cost estimates and the duration, and the, what can happen in that case is, you can get to the lowest cost of who's qualified and say, boy, that's too much, but it's a better alternative than getting to, to everybody within your cost bucket, if you will, and then not finding somebody who's qualified to do it. So, so I kind of understand that, in the car analogy, it's, it's, you have $15,000 to spend, you remove the Tesla from consideration, but both of those things drive, and, and they get you where you want to go. This, this, if you wind up with somebody that's not qualified because of the cost, it doesn't make sense to move forward. If we have, if we know that the, the, the lowest-cost qualified person is more, then we have to deal with that. So I would just, I would just suggest flipping those criteria, and then the only other question for me in the RFP is, the process by which the consultant is, is hired, whether a subcommittee interviews that consultant, or the entire council, if it is a subcommittee, which is probably more doable, I think it should come back to the council before it's all negotiated and stuff, so, so there's a consensus to move forward with that, that consultant. I, I don't know if it's better, going to five is harder to negotiate than, than two, right? So, but I think five could give direction to two, and then let the two handle it, I think that would be efficient.
Councilmember Gibbons?
I was just going to say, I'm not sure if I followed Councilmember Resnick's comments on the, the process. It's not uncommon in state law to say that cost for proposals cannot be considered, and what often happens is that the cost figure is put in a sealed envelope, and that is opened after you get to a certain part of the process, and that helps people focus on the quality and content of the presentation, and not get hung up on best cost business, and that, that's usually a big help.
So if I may, I think we're agreeing then on the, on the order, because I'm saying the qualifications are number one, and however we get to that point of, can we afford them, should be the next step, so I'm agreeing with the, with the order.
And one avenue is just to have the dollars put in a sealed envelope. I also think that we've made a lot of assumptions this evening, that there will be one meeting a month, I think that's where the consultant input might be valuable, they might want to change that around, so I just offer that, because it's talking here about, you know, assuming a minimum of 12 community meetings, and so forth, there's a lot of meetings in here, so I think these are reasonable assumptions for a proposal, when you have put the money in, but it wouldn't be unusual when you do the final scope, that some of that gets tweaked based on the recommendation of the consultant. One other thing, oh, and the other thing that I've mentioned before is, unless I missed it, there's no mention here of updating the ordinances, and the general plan would not be a, a complete document without the ordinances being updated. And I think we want to be sure that, that, that process and requirement, whether it's done by this consultant or not, or done by staff, we have a sense of the overall timeframe for the general plan elements, updates, new and old, whatever, the environmental impact process, and the ordinance, because that, that's the complete package that we mentioned earlier, you need to understand that whole thing, and I don't see that in the RFP, we may not want it in the RFP, but I just want to be sure we don't lose track of that.
Yeah, that, that's correct, Councilmember Gibbons, when we started the process, we, we weren't given that direction to just do, we, we were given the direction just to look at the general plan. But there are cities, you're right, that can do the whole, you know, the whole package, they do it together. Then that gets into also, you know, what about all the area plans that exist as well, and, so that, that needs to be really clear in terms of what their direction is, do they just, do they focus on the, all the, because the zoning ordinance, like the area plans, are implementing your general plan.
I mean, my, my comment, as I made earlier, is that concurrent review of the ordinances is beneficial in both sides. The ordinances, pros and cons, help inform the element, and the element helps, or then requires the ordinance, ordinance, or, ordinances. If, so I, I would be supportive of having a concurrent up... If, so I, I would be supportive of having a concurrent up, review and update of the ordinance or maybe just even a review if you feel staff can do the ordinances later, but I think it's important to include it in here. Yeah, yeah.
So we need a motion, if anybody would like? Have to receive the report?
Motion to allow response to the matter.
What? Don't we need a motion for this? And provide direction to staff? Yeah, 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 yeah. Okay.
Right, there's, there's no resolution that you need to adopt, but just that we have consensus on how we're moving forward. So, you know, moving forward, we don't have to second guess ourselves again.
Excellent. So now we'll go on to.